Today is the 10th day of May 2011. This is the Arts, Parks, Health and Aging Committee. I'm joined by the distinguished Councilman of the Great 10th District, Herb Wesson. And we're ready to roll, Mr. Clerk. Item number one.
Item number one is the L.A. for Kids Steering Committee Report Resolution and Ordinance of Intention Relative to the Proposed 2011-12 Proposition K Assessment.
Great. Is anyone here for item number one? Thank you so much.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Bernice Hollins, Office of the CIO. The item before committee today, the 2011-12 Assessment Report, provides recommendations in three areas: the proposed budget plan for the upcoming fiscal year, adjustments to the current year budget, and a recommended one-year postponement of the next RFP cycle. The proposed budget plan represents a significant program milestone. In 1997, the program received a 30-year authorization by adoption of a ballot measure. Next year's budget is for program year 15, which marks the halfway point in the program. The program management team will be returning to committee next year with a report summarizing the program's accomplishments and a plan to complete the remaining specified project. In terms of the funding recommendations, the 2011-12 budget is largely reflective of recommendations provided by council appointees participating in the budget deliberation process, with a $2.7 million increase for regional specified projects. Over 70% of the next year's budget is allocated for capital projects with a balanced reserve for program administration, maintenance, and debt service. Adjustments to the current year budget include reprogramming of project funds to reflect current status and funding needs, award and maintenance funds, and allocation of interest funds to offset programs' shortfall collections. Each council office received notification of the recommended RFP postponement prior to a special meeting conducted by the steering committee on April 19 to consider community input. The postponement will provide several advantages, including an increase in the overall funding availability from $12.9 million to $26.6 million, and deferring operation and maintenance costs for competitive projects to future years. In terms of fiscal impact, next year's budget will provide $4.6 million in general fund reimbursements, while the cost of operating and maintaining active recreation and parks projects is estimated $6.1 million once all projects come online.
Mr. Neil Drucker?
Hello, Councilman.
Anything to add to it?
No, the Bureau of Engineering supports the recommendations as stated by the CIO.
Okay. Mr. Wesson? Just a couple of questions. One, so there's one year we're going to bounce, okay? What if, let's say, someone is in the last two years of their term and they're very anxious to complete a project? Fortunately, with great, both Mr. Wesson and I just received a four-year extension of our terms, which I understand, but let's say there's some council members who may be completing their years of service. I would like to have a little option to say if there's anything significant that someone truly the community's waiting for, that it's, I don't want to use the word stumbled, but it's, it's, it's found its way near the finish line, but it's got a hold for a year, we want to consider it. I don't want it to shut down for a year, meaning if there's something that's there. What's a good word, Madam CLA, to be able to verbalize that?
Well, I can say, we've come up with on a few projects just like that that have actually recently come up and were discussed at the steering committee that Bernice mentioned, an interim solution, which is one, looking at other funds, Quimby, sites and facilities, general funds to either formally fund the project, or what we've done on, for example, you have a Runyon Canyon acquisition coming up.
Right.
We're going to use some sites and facilities funds, fund an appraisal for the acquisition.
There's a Prop K at Runyon, right? There's Prop K at Runyon?
That's correct.
Yeah, I don't want to keep there. I want to use it to acquire the land if possible.
Understood. Until that, until that money comes online in Prop K, we would have other funding sources that we could do the appraisal and pre-acquisition, and then once the Prop K money becomes available, we would then move it.
Mr. Wesson?
Mr. Chair, maybe you could request that some kind of exemption language be created, and just keep it broad and simple like that.
If the council will have a, if there's an urgency for a project, we'll consider an urgency, think up, think up the wording between now and council. See, here's what I don't want to hear. I don't want to hear you're going to stop everything in case there's an opportunity to help someone in this next year. I can understand, we got to put the brakes on, right? Okay. But let's say there's something that's real close that the community's waiting for, that the elected official, the neighborhood, the councils, people have been waiting for, and just to say, well, we're going to postpone for a year, there should be some way to bring it back up. You're all talented people.
Councilmember, we've actually discussed those very issues with each council office, the staff, and in some situations, as Neil said, we've been able to identify alternative funding to either meet the full project need or to meet early development needs of the project. If, for an example, CD5 had an acquisition that would be adversely impacted by this deferral, however, we were able to find funds to meet half of their funding needs and are continuing to work on a reprogramming exercise that will identify additional funds to offset the funding need for that project.
Tell me why we're stopping the next year.
The, there are several advantages to deferring the competitive cycle. The city is required, under the terms of the ballot measure, to award $143 million through a competitive award process. To date, we've awarded $97.7 million to 200 projects through seven competitive cycles. Staff recommended a one-year postponement of the eighth cycle and increasing the funding cycle from a two-year period to a three-year period. Taken together, these recommendations would increase the overall funding available, and on a per-council-district basis, you would go from having an average of $800,000 available to $1.8 million available through the cycle. But to briefly-
Here's the thing I just wanted to say. If someone is stuck, I want, and I only can think of the movie The Damn Yankees. I don't know if you remember that movie, Herb? Anyway, old movie, you know, TCM, you know, Turner Classic Movies. The guy had an escape clause, and the escape clause allowed him to go back to his wife. And that was the thing. It was a great part of the movie. You got Damn Yankees, great movie. Okay. I would like to have some type of a clause that if there's any unusual circumstance, the CIO's office will consider be the matter somehow. You know, I agree with you that it's good to take a pause, but I want that there. If someone is half short, like the 5th District, on this land acquisition, two years is a long time to skip, you know, from right now. So I'm just saying, if they're, if the council, in its judgment, deems a project is worthy and needs activation, it will consider it. I don't know what the words are.
We can restate the instructions from the Steering Committee, which is to work with those council offices to identify funds to meet the needs of their projects. If that's the language that you'd like added-
Right. But if, if, if this passed by council, this passed by council, does that preclude us from touching that money for that year?
No, actually, actually, the $6.3 million that's, that would be impacted in year 16 of the program, we're going into year 15, those monies would be used instead for, within year 16, to accelerate specified projects. Each council office has specified projects that have not been brought online, and those are the projects that we're looking to utilize these funds for. And because of the prevailing low cost in the construction market right now, we've been advancing specified projects that have had significant project shortfalls that we were not able to address in prior years. So those are one of the mitigating efforts that we would make is to bring on projects in those council offices using our specified funds.
Okay, Mr. Wesson?
Yeah, I have one other question. You know, the chair's asked a couple of times about the escape clause, some exemption language or what have you, and you guys never answer it. I mean, the question is now, why will you not add some language that in the case of an emergency, you could do this, that, and the other? Maybe you guys know something that, that we don't know. And does it, does it hurt, does it unravel the whole plan if there was some kind of exemption language, if like Mr. LeBaron says, something comes up?
Well, councilmember, that's what I was trying to respond to, to get clarification to what that escape clause would be. Would it be to work with the council offices to identify other funding, or would it be to initiate the RFP cycle early? But we're not opposed to providing language. I'm just trying to get clarification to-
Let's say there's one, let's say there's one or two projects, let's say in the 15th District, and not in, where someone has a long time, I'm going to forego that, you know, but, and I think Mr. Wesson may be in that position. Yeah. But I'm just saying, if a project is deemed in need, that the Prop K Committee will activate the process in that blank, in that, in that dark year.
I think the concern is that once we activate, and that's why Bernice said RFP, the competitive process is citywide. We've never done it for just one project. We've made requests for proposals citywide, and what that would require us to do, unless the city attorney has some other opinion, is to actually send out the RFP for everybody, not just that one project.
Okay, I got it.
Councilmembers, Marcia Gonzalez-Kimbrow in the city attorney's office. Mr. Drucker is correct. The ballot measure restricts or requires the competitive pot of money to be awarded solely through a competitive process. That competitive process was implemented by council through an implementing ordinance, which requires a citywide competitive process. So if, if one or two specific projects came up, the competitive process would not guarantee that those projects actually get funded. Those projects would have to compete in a citywide RFP process. And the RFP process generally takes nine months or so. So it would be disingenuous, I think, to think that a project that comes up that urgently would get a competitive pot of money awarded to it that urgently.
So taking the city's attorney's advice, go with the CIO in the sense that they'll do all they can to try to assist in the project?
And especially with acquisition, if, if with other city money, the acquisition could happen, certainly the development could apply for competitive funds.
Right. Mr. Wesson, I'm taking advice of the city councilor, of the city attorney.
That answer made all the sense in the world to me.
Yeah, not to the CIO.
I tried to get it out of me. But it's, I knew there was a reason.
Right.
And now we know what it is. So I'm good with the deal.
We're good. We recommend approval. And just when you come to council, make sure, because sometimes, not every, all the words trickle down to the council person. So, you know, make the rounds, at least for those who have hot projects that you think could get stuck in this.
When is it scheduled for?
When's it scheduled for?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. So you can't make the rounds because you got to do it. But be in council at least to come to the room.
And we have spoken to most of the council office staff, and I think most of them are aware of it, and a number of them attended at the special steering committee meeting we held.
Very good. Thank you all. Thank you. Bye-bye. Next item.
Item number two is a report from the Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioners relative to approval of a permanent easement to the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transit Authority for a portion of the Elysian Park hillside.
Good morning, councilmembers. Sid Makarag, Director of Real Estate for Recreation Parks. We ask for your consideration for the granting of a permanent easement to the L.A. County Metropolitan Transportation Authority. What this easement is for is for the placement of a special netting on the side of a hill.
Oh, it's a great special netting. It protects people's health and safety. It's on that-
That's correct.
Above the transition road of the Interstate 5 to the passing freeway southbound.
Oh.
And it's quite an engineering feat where they, they actually shoot cable into the hillside, and then they net it as if it's holding up the hillside. So very much support this. Mr. Reyes supports it, that I'm told, so I-
That I support.
And we support. We all support it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Sid. We'll talk to you later. Leave your business card, because I want to call you about some other things. Leave it with Lisa. Lisa, get Sid's business card. Next item.
Item number three is an item that was continued from April 12, 2011. It's a city attorney report in response to motion Rosenthal, Reyes, Gercetti, and Corretts relative to the mechanisms necessary to enable the city's film permit process to require workplace safety in the production of all adults, adult films. This item is also referred to the Jobs and Economic Development Committee.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a public comment. Brian Chase, Alexandria Mayers, Shelley Lubin, Adam Cohen, and James Clare, if you want to take your seats. And whoever called first could speak.
And councilmembers, thank you very much for having us. My name is Brian Chase. I'm Assistant General Counsel at AIDS Healthcare Foundation. I'm here once again to ask the city to do whatever it can to enforce workplace safety within the adult film industry. As you may have followed in recent news, the adult film industry has been racked by a series of controversies recently. Apparently, a tremendous amount of private information, including real names and home addresses regarding thousands of adult film performers, has been leaked and placed on an internet site. There is speculation, though it is not confirmed, that a lot of that data came from the adult industry Medical Healthcare Foundation, a healthcare facility in the valley that performed sexually transmitted disease testing for performers. It wouldn't be surprising if that information came from that facility, because that facility released passwords that allowed multiple adult film producers to access confidential information, including real names and STD testing results online for performers. That facility has just closed due to this controversy and multiple other controversies. The adult film industry now has no, has no regular means of testing and confirming that performers are safe from sexually transmitted diseases. Even when this facility was operating, it only tested for three diseases. So performers were routinely exposed to syphilis, hepatitis, herpes, human papillomavirus, and multiple other diseases that the industry didn't test for at all. The attempt at self-regulation by this industry has, at this point, completely fallen. It's failed. It is broken down. It no longer exists. So we're asking the city take whatever steps that it can to push this industry towards worker safety, including conditioning film permits on following pre-existing health and safety regulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person that I called was Alexandra, hi.
Hi.
Meyer?
Mayers.
Meyer, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Good morning, councilmembers. My name's Alexandra Mayers, and I'm a former adult film actress. I appreciate you addressing the issues of health and safety of the adult film industry, because as of current, I feel that the STD rate, at least from my observation, is out of control. From the time I began working in the porn industry in 2008 to when I departed in 2009, I contracted chlamydia a total of three times, each time from working on a porn set. I feel at this stage, considering the closure of AIM, which up until recently was the porn industry's primary STD testing program and facility- industry's primary STD testing program and facility, um, sorry.
No, relax.
Testing, well, that was, that was the primary place where people went to get tested, and now it's closed, and there's nothing that's solidly in place at this point. So, I really think that whether you get a curable or incurable STD, that rate is just gonna increase and get worse. When I entered the porn industry, I was really under the impression that condoms were, would be more widespreadly utilized, but in reality, you're told that if you request a condom, you're basically not gonna work. And, you know, having all that exposure to all the bodily fluids, you know, especially in this day and age, considering that AIM's closed, it's just not gonna be something that works out very well. So, I'm running out of time, so...
You can take all the time you need.
Oh, I can?
Yeah, feel comfortable.
I'm so nervous.
Okay, I know. Put your hands up and just relax. Good time, public comment.
I'm not good at public speaking, but, um, okay. I just feel that condoms being mandatory a lot in porn, along with other rigid health and safety standards being in place right now, is paramount. Mainly because most legal professions out there, when you enter the workplace, you're gonna leave that workplace in the same physical health condition as when you entered. But with porn, that's not the case. You know, I think about all these young women who come out here from the middle of nowhere, and there really isn't any kind of solid training program or educational program for new adult actresses coming into the industry. You know, they claim that there is, at least AIM did with the DVDs like Porn 101 and 102, that every new actress was supposed to be able to view, but so many agents and managers who do have license in the industry purposely encourage women not to watch these videos, because if you watch the videos, there's no way that you would go into such a work environment. So, I suppose just to close, I just really think that legally, something needs to step in a place as far as having physical protection from the bodily fluids, and if possible, maybe some sort of an educational or training program that new actresses and actors, you know, definitely have to go through before entering porn, because otherwise, you could leave with something that you can't get rid of, and that's wrong.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for giving me extra time.
You got it. Shelley Lubin?
Good morning, distinguished Councilmembers. My name is Shelley Lubin, and I am President of the Pink Cross Foundation, which is a nonprofit that reaches out to adult film industry workers, offering support and resources for recovery. I sincerely thank you for addressing these issues of safety and health in the adult film industry. Not only are they extremely important to workers, it's also very personal to me. I'm a former porn actress who was subjected to horrific work conditions, to include unsanitary restrooms with used products and razors stoned on the ground. I was subjected to filthy sets and bodily fluids, urine, feces, blood, vaginal, seminal fluids. I was forced to have sex on a mostly male, unsupervised set where anything goes. I was also forced to perform high-risk sex acts without protection, no condoms allowed. If I complained, I was threatened. Because of the horrible work conditions I was forced to work in, I caught two sexually transmitted diseases, one of them non-curable. I was devastated, to say the least. I was even more devastated to learn I had early cervical cancer due to the unprotected sex, and had to have half of my cervix removed. The consequences for the work conditions in the adult film industry almost took my life. But 16 years later, I'm still here speaking to you, good people today, to urge you to take action. Adult filmmakers need your help immediately. I urge you to draft up any kind of mechanisms within the city's film permitting process to eliminate excessive safety and health violations within the adult film industry. Swift action is needed. Please do not allow the porn industry to get away with any more murder than it already has. Something must be done now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could I talk...
She's a pro, she's got 20 seconds left.
20 seconds.
That was a good presentation.
Adam Cohen.
Going for 21.
Adam Cohen.
Dear distinguished Councilmembers, my name is Adam Cohen, I'm currently a public health PhD student with a focus on sexual and reproductive health. I'm here to speak on behalf of the UCLA Reproductive Health Interest Group. This group has been following the issue of inadequate safety measures within the adult film industry for over seven years. On behalf of the Reproductive Health Interest Group, I'm here to comment on the report from the Los Angeles Attorney, uh, City Attorney regarding mechanisms necessary to enable city's film permitting process to require workplace safety in the production of all adult films. The City Attorney Report does an excellent job of outlining the current law regarding condoms within the adult film industry. However, we feel that the City Attorney's Office has neglected to fulfill their primary task of proposing mechanisms necessary to ensure mandatory condom use. We see no reason why the current permitting process can condone substandard and poor work conditions that are illegal under state and federal occupational health law. In the past months, another performer contracted HIV, likely through a workplace exposure. During this performer's brief four-month stint in the industry, he contracted chlamydia, gonorrhea, herpes, and HIV. Adheres to the bloodborne pathogen standard, such as a strict condom policy and functional injury prevention plan, would be sufficient to ensure worker safety measures this performer was not afforded. I ask you to consider the cost burden of HIV on the Los Angeles community. The average lifetime cost of HIV care is over $600,000. Since most performers lack adequate insurance coverage, the community pays up the cost of treatment for repeated exposure to sexually transmitted infections. Condoms, on the other hand, are free. Mandatory condom use are, as required by current occupational health law, would significantly reduce workplace injuries and the burden of disease on our greater community. Within California, the production and distribution of adult film is legal. Workers within this, within this industry deserve to be afforded the same basic rights and protections other Angelenos enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Representing Cal OSHA, James Clare, is that correct?
Clark.
Clark, I'm sorry, Mr. Clark.
No problem, Councilmember.
Thank you. Take as much as you want as a representative of the state of California.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I am representing, representing the Division of Occupational Safety and Health, and I'm here to comment on the city attorney's legal opinion. First of all, what I am not here to talk about, I am not here to talk about the, the authority that the city has under its municipal powers to undertake this kind of action, either through its zoning process or through some other permitting process. I'm not here to comment on the city resources that are available or not available for that effort, nor am I here to comment on city policy. These, these are all your bailiwick, and I don't pretend to be an expert in those fields. What I can talk to you about, though, is the preemption doctrine and how it applies in this particular case. The preemption doctrine in general says that whenever state law acts in a certain, particular way so as to preclude local action, the state law controls. The question is whether that doctrine applies here. We begin with a process, and I'm assuming that when the city undertakes an action, it does so in a sense, I'm sorry, it does so with legitimate city powers, like zoning. And when it does take that municipal action, there is a preference that the courts give, a presumption that the courts give, to favoring the municipal action, even though there is a lot of state law on the same subject. So, they have actually carved out three particular areas of concern, each of which, I think, does not apply to this case. So the first question is, does a proposed action on your part, such as a zoning action or permitting process, is it duplicative of the general state law in this field? And the answer is no, and it's not duplicative for two reasons. First of all, it covers different people. We have jurisdiction only over employees. That is, if there is no employer-employee relationship, we do not have jurisdiction over work safety under those conditions. Many adult film actors are engaged as private contractors, and therefore, they do not fall directly under our jurisdiction. The other aspect is the, is the kind of remedy that is available for reaching one of the safety rules. The remedy under Cal OSHA's system is for us to issue a citation to the employer, saying you have put your employees at risk in this particular way, and that violates a certain section of Title 8 of the, of the California Code of Regulations. And then after that, the employer has the opportunity to go to the Cal OSHA Appeals Board and can appeal that particular citation for those particular grounds. That matches the federal system, and it's very detailed, but it is our exclusive remedy. If you had an exception, for instance, for an adult film operator to the zoning ordinance that precluded filming at a certain locale, and you, and you found a violation, your remedy is different. Your remedy is to pull the permit, and if they keep on operating, to send out the police...
Here's the thing, I think from the report, we're not gonna be able to police...
Absolutely not.
...all this here.
Right.
Let me just ask the question, as OSHA, Cal OSHA, in every factory, in every warehouse, in every workplace, there's an employee board that lists a lot of, of laws that protect workers, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, what if the state of California added item number 37, that those who are engaged must have protective, uh, uh, I don't wanna call it equipment, a protective, uh, whatever the word is. What is the word?
Barrier protection.
Well, I don't know if that would be, I think it was more global in the sense of their protective, I don't think gear, I don't know, what kinda girl are you there? I'm kidding you, I love you, Lisa. Okay, I love you, Lisa, I love you.
We have a term called personal protection.
Personal protection, for health, whether it's a mask, if you're working on a machine, in a print shop, ink flies, you have to do that. That's what I would see would be, 'cause we're not gonna have the police, we're not interested in police, and we're interested in people's health.
That's why I'm not commenting on the resources of the...
I got that, I got that, but here's the thing, AIDS Healthcare Foundation's done a tremendous job in educating people throughout Southern California on the challenges that are facing us to the crisis of AIDS, HIV. That being said, how could we, 'cause we're not gonna be, as the report stated, we're not gonna have anyone, uh, it would have to be somewhat self-pleased. I'm, I'm trying to think of, uh, the, uh, smoking laws that we have are self-pleased in work sites, posted there, uh, some of these things here, which, and, and it go, and it crosses over city borders. You know, our city is one of 88 in the county. So, is our city attorney here on this issue? Hi, I'm sorry, Madam City Attorney, forgive me. What do you suggest? 'Cause we're trying to, number one, live up to the title of this committee, Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging, which is real important, the humanities and health is real important. What do you suggest?
Good morning, Council. Kimberly Miera from the City Attorney's Office. I have met with Mr. Clark last week, I also met with representatives from the County Council's Office. We are currently looking at whether there are some options. I understand, Mr. Clark can correct me if I'm wrong, that Cal OSHA intends to file a written opinion or reply to our report. If they, if they plan on doing so, I would be unprepared to answer fully until the report is filed. I haven't had a chance to, to see it, but we are currently meeting and, and looking at if there are any options. And, like you said, with the smoking ordinances, as I understand it, the council passed an enabling ordinance, and the, and by contract, the County Department of Public Health enforces that. I'm unclear if that would be the case in this situation.
But you would look at it.
We would look at it, but I'm unclear if, if that would be the case.
Mr. Weston.
I have a question for Mr. Clark, and maybe I misunderstood you, but I was of the impression that you said, basically, your job simply is to protect employees.
That's correct.
And that in this industry, a lot of the individuals are hired as private contractors, which does not fall under your jurisdiction.
That's correct.
Has there been a discussion where it relates to the feasibility of including, at least to a certain degree, private contractors, or is that just an impossibility? When I say private contractors, for you to be able to make sure that the private, basically what's happening, I, I'm assuming, I don't know.
Right.
They go in and say, we've got a gig, you've gotta sign this deal, saying that you're a private contractor, and maybe they do that to protect themselves, that's what I'm...
That would not surprise me, yes.
Assuming. But is there a way to afford these protections to private contractors as well, or would that take state legislation?
It takes state legislation. We are creation of the Labor Code, and the Labor Code defines that jurisdiction to the employer-employee relationship. And in order to broaden that, there would have to be some legislative concern. It would have to cover, just so you know...
Yeah.
...broader situations than simply this one, because if we begin to have jurisdiction over private contractors, that, that will broaden not only the private contractors in the adult film industry, but also private contracting relationships in industry generally, and that, that takes a lot of thinking.
Last thing. Miss, Miss, Madam President, Miss Lubin, can I ask you a question? Have you had any, or any of you this, I under, I think I understand what you're attempting to do, and it's very challenging, and I commend you for trying to do that. Have there been discussions with a progressive legislator or two about some assistance from the state level? Because it would help, I would think, if there were some additional things put in place by the state, you know, maybe some clarification language and some, so have, has there been...
Cal OSHA is going, has some clarification language that they'll have on June 7th, where they will, they did say that condoms are mandated, and so while we're here today, is we thought the filming permitting process, maybe you can add something to the permit, like they would have to say, um, they sign an explicit statement that says we're going to use condoms on this set, and, and that, we give you 72-hour advance notice for the locations, so then that could assist Cal OSHA in making these citations. So that's really what we see, that you might have jurisdiction is in the film permitting process.
Hmm.
And truly, they are employees. They're directed, the behavior's directed, and they're very young women who are signing contracts that don't, can't even understand words like arbitration, litigation...
Now, I get that.
...waiving your moral rights.
I get that, but if, 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 let's say I was one of your buds, and we were just sitting around chatting, the, the first recommendation that I would make to you is that we, you, need a champion in Sacramento.
Yeah.
And I would think, since I spent a few years there myself, given this cause, that there would be several forward-thinking folk up there that might see merit in being a champion. So I would maybe get together with my group of board members or whatever, and try to identify individuals in Sacramento that would be very excited.
We do that for a while, and we have some good ones, but we need to go back, so thank you.
And one I would just suggest, I served with him for a little while, would be State Senator, uh, Mark Leno. I used to call him Jay Leno when I teased him, but he's out of San Francisco, very progressive guy, smart as a whip. He's in such good shape, you look at him and it makes you sick, okay? 'Cause that's just how...
But he's a healthy guy.
He's a great, and a good friend, but I would, I would, uh, that's what I would...
I will contact him.
'Cause this is, this is his kinda cause.
Okay, well, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Senator Leno.
What, Madam City Attorney?
If I may comment on one of the points that Miss Lubin raised, when she suggested, we call them, or they are called shoot sheets. When a company, a production company comes in to fill out an application for a permit, once it's been, it's made its way through the process and it's been approved, there are shoot sheets that come out, and regarding the location, date, times of filming, that kind of thing. And Film LA, the entity that administratively processes the permits for the Los Angeles Police Department, has offered to provide Cal OSHA with advance notice of the shoot sheets, so that they can, should they wish, I mean, I don't pretend to, um, also, like Mr. Clark, and, you know, delie in Cal OSHA policies and procedures, but Film LA can make those shoot sheets available to Cal OSHA in advance, should they wish to handle, handle it from their end.
If I make a movie, and I crash in a city, into a public space and destroy a children's play area, and then the movie goes out on a big screen, and it shows that, but they didn't have a permit to do that, or in their permit it violated it because they went over a curb into a public space, could the city attorneys go after those filmmakers for that?
Well, the shooting of a film for commercial purposes without a permit is a misdemeanor, so the city attorney could file...
Yeah, I don't wanna get into that, 'cause all I'm just saying here is, I'm thinking, the only film company that, that, uh, right now does not... the only film company that right now does not show people smoking is Disney. They violated. And recently, in the last years, and I think smoking is an individual choice, and people have that right, but recently, and I think it's really down to fifteen percent of California is smoking, we know there's health issues there, and I'm just throwing that out there on the whole way there. But the film industry took that away. One company did that. I'm trying to say, too, that in some of their films, and sometimes, and I haven't been in the movies in a long time with my wife, a long, long, long time, at the end of the credits, it says, and this was approved, that when they... Let's say it was a film, a cowboy film, and it had horses in it, that the National Society of, to prevent cruelty to animals, observed this, and somebody was on watch on there. Is that a voluntarily inclusion into that film for that credit, or is that a requirement when they have horses or animals and how they treat animals? I'm just seeing, too, the health is a big thing, and if you have to change habits, it's really important to change habits to keep good health. So, that's all we're trying to do, and if there's a cooperative spirit... And what percentage do we think? And is anyone here from Film LA?
No, your honor.
Yeah, okay. You said, "No, your honor"?
I almost did. I'm a former litigator.
Oh, God. Man, now I feel like a big shot. I feel like a big shot there on that one. I know. Yeah, yeah, I know. So, how many films are shot without permits?
If we're talking about adult films, I would say overwhelmingly, majority are shot without permits.
Right. So, we're chasing something that cannot, you know, be done. Other than at the end of the day, if they sell something, and if in the cigarette there's too much chemical or whatever it is, then that's a violation of the health code. In the product that they sell, if they're not doing it correctly to the state law or the local law, then that's a violation. So, what I would think, Mr. Weston, I'm, you know, we're throwing out a lot of broad... We all, I think, agree, health is the number one issue here. If we could continue this sixty days and have staffs meet with the city attorney at Cal OSHA, the community, to see if there's a way that we could do this, even if it's on the posted that at an employee site, or whatever the case may be, there may be something that could do that, without getting complicated, without sending police officers out, without sending people out. It should be self-regulated, because public health is number one. And when you mention young people, young people do get influence. They come to Hollywood, they want to get a job, they don't get a job, they don't get a job, finally someone says, "Hey, here's a job, make five hundred bucks." And all of a sudden, they get into a situation where they may lose some of their good health.
Well, I agree that this discussion merits more discussion.
Right.
What... An alarm just went off, though, when you indicated that the majority of these productions are not permitted. I mean, they don't go and they don't get a permit.
That's correct.
And I'm assuming that's because you can go to a house somewhere, apartment, a garage, and... So, that's troubling to me, because even if we were able to put something in place, if they're not going to get the permits or what have you, anyway, I think we need, whoever's going to do some more research on that, we need to try to find a way to... I mean, if you're supposed to have a permit, you're supposed to have a permit, and if you don't have a permit, we should jam your you-know-what. And we need to come up with some muscle, some teeth, so that we can jam... And I don't have a clue as to how we move forward with that, but see, this, and I'm learning more and more, I guess, all you need is like a room, depending on how elaborate.
So, that being said, I think we should get Film LA... Is anyone here from the adult film industry at all? You know, maybe reach out to them to see what... Because I think here's the thing. I remember when they first had, like in nineteen sixty-two or sixty-four, the Surgeon General reported about smoking. They first came out, they removed smoking from advertising on television. Just it was a very long period of time, but now we're in a situation where it's an issue that we all understand and people make choices, but there's no one, I think, in the state does not realize that there's a challenge to health if you smoke tobacco or smoke cigars and inhale, whatever the case may be. And everybody has a right to do that. On the other hand, here, in the sense of a worker's safety, which is real important, whoever they are, if they're put in a situation, if they're not wearing a helmet in a mining operation, that's unsafe, and so I think we should look for some of those things, but have it done where it's self-regulated, where government can't go in and do this here, that it's respected.
Last...
And, yeah...
Last question for me, or not question...
I don't want to regulate movies or content.
No, no, I get that. Are there any good guy... I mean, you mentioned Disney or somebody voluntarily doesn't...
Yeah, they don't make these kind of movies. They're just smoking.
No, no, but you mentioned that they did something on their own...
Right.
...where they stopped do... Are there any...
Adult film producers...
...that are good guys?
Or good girls?
Good people.
Well...
Because I would...
Those that are following the law?
Right.
One, I think one of them, Wicked Pictures, had an IIPP injury and illness prevention plan in the Cal OSHA meeting, and nobody else did. They're like, "We're not wearing condoms," and no, they're mandated.
But I think if there are any, that I'd be curious to see, you know, why are they doing it the right way? Are they still... I mean, maybe they can give some...
They're fighting the issue.
Well, I think there's a whole creative value, a creative value, let's say. So, okay, so we got that. It is true that Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley in particular is the capital of production on that thing. And also, I'd like to ask the CLA to see if there's anything in European countries that deals with this, which is somewhat a little more progressive. When you use the term progressive, I thought of that, how they work with this issue. And let's talk to each other in the coming weeks, but then we'll hear this again in about sixty days. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Thank you. Okay. No other items before us. Everybody have a great day.